I'm out of place in a sea full of smiles Walking down Main Street tonight Got a lot on my mind since you walked out and said "Merry Christmas babe, give me some time" Holidays are coming and there's no way around Better join in the holiday crowd While I'm struggling to find some peace of mind Merry Christmas babe, hope you're alright When you're not here to walk with me It all seems like a waste So tell me tonight, won't you come home? These are the days you shouldn't be alone And if tonight, you've got no plans Bring the miracle back home around Cause I need it in this part of town Quarter past six and you're still on my mind While an old man sings Oh Holy Night Yeah, the streets might be full but I'm empty inside Merry Christmas babe, wish you were mine When you're not here to walk with me Which makes it all seem great So tell me tonight, won't you come home? These are the days you shouldn't be alone And if tonight, you've got no plans Bring the miracle back home around Cause I need it in this part of town I don't need anything, guess I got everything I should be doing just fine But there is still something, it is that one thing Still missing you So tell me tonight, won't you come home? These are the days you shouldn't be alone And if tonight, you've got no plans Bring the miracle back home around Cause I need it in this part of town Yeah, I need it in this part of town
And I wanted to thank, I hope everybody had a great holiday and New Year. And anyway, and wanted to thank the Planning Commission staff for providing the study session. That was very helpful. Thank you. And at this point, I'm going to read the, "Welcome to the January 23rd, 2024 Huntington Beach Planning Commission meeting. While the Planning Commission welcomes public involvement in free speech, it rejects comments from anyone that are discriminatory, defamatory, or otherwise not protected speech. Those comments will not inform nor be considered by the Planning Commission and may cause for the Chair to interrupt the speaker. Such comments will not be consented to or otherwise adopted by the Planning Commission in its discussion and findings for any matter tonight." Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Kennedy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, right hand over your heart. A pledge of allegiance.
Goodbye, the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, and at this point, may I please have roll call? Commissioner Adam.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Vice Chair Twining.
Here.
Chair Palman.
Here.
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Acosta Galván.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Okay, now it's time for public comments, for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Do we have any public comments? We have no public comments. Thank you. Okay, at this point, next on the agenda is the nomination and election of the Planning Commission Chair. And I would like to make a motion to set aside the bylaws and policies overseeing the election of the Chair and Vice Chair. Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, so I, I know that last year when we sort of went through this sort of procedure, there, there was an sort of an updated or some, some discussion item about updating the, the bylaws. So just wondering where that conversation went, or why weren't the bylaws changed?
Well, I, I basically was going to put through a, some amendments to, to clean up that section because on one section it says the person who has the most seniority, and then the other section conflicts with that and says the majority vote. So we'll just leave it like that, and in the future, if somebody would like to, if the Planning Commission would like to go with the other, then they can.
Okay.
So.
So I, I would just recommend, I'd like to, I'd like to make, like if, if we're going to be moving forward based on who we want to choose as a majority, I feel like we should change the, the policy itself. I, I mean, I have no objection. Honestly, for me, I don't, I don't want, I wouldn't want the position because I feel like it's sort of similar. I mean, we all have a vote, we all have a voice.
Sure.
Being a Chair, being a Vice Chair, that to me is irrelevant because we're voted by our, it's sort of elected by, or appointed by our council members to do the job, which is to ensure that we follow the general plan and the zoning of the city. So again, to me, it's not whether I want to be a Vice Chair or a Chair. It's if we're going to have rules in place, then we should follow them, and if not, then we should change them. And if we want to change them, I'm okay with that, but we should go through that process first. I don't know. Just, just my take, but yeah.
Commissioner Rodriguez, we do have both rules in place.
Okay.
So my position last January was to clean it up.
Yeah.
And then I thought, okay, maybe that's not where this commission is, we were new at the time, and I'd be willing to look at cleanup language.
Yeah.
You know, maybe ongoing, but at this point, we have a motion on the table and a second.
Yeah, I, I think we know how the vote's going to go in general, which is, it's fine.
Sure.
But I, I think maybe we should maybe have a task to maybe next, next month, let's clean it up. And I mean, if you want it to be majority, I have no objections to that, but you know.
Okay.
That's just my take. I don't know if anybody else wants to say something, but that's.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm supportive of it, but I, I just, let's clean it up. And it doesn't have to be conditioned upon this vote, but I would support, I'm gonna support the motion to, if you guys want to do that.
So.
But I would like to just, it would be nice to just clean it up so there's no discrepancy between two different ways to do it.
I have the, the wording in place that I recommended, like probably I was going to recommend, but then I thought we were a new commission, and I said, okay, we've already, you know, gone through that. We'll see what happens this time. So maybe it's time for that. And so I can ask Mr. Ramos to pull out that wording that, that I had put together approximately nine or 10 months ago. And you guys can look it over and see what you think, okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. So at this point, I'd like to call for the vote. All, all those in favor?
In favor of setting, setting aside?
Yes.
Okay.
And.
We have six ayes. Commissioner Acosta Galván, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to have Commissioner Twining be the Chair Commissioner. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, please.
Give me one moment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Coit.
Okay, we have five ayes. Commissioners Acosta Galván and Rodriguez voting nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, at this point.
No, we got a, we got a.
Oh, yeah. No, I think you handle it now. Do I, if he's the Chair, do I let him do the next one, or do you want me to do it?
It, it doesn't matter, but don't move chairs yet.
Okay.
Because your vote, your votes won't be recorded correctly.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to elect the Vice Chair as Commissioner Kennedy.
I'd like to make a motion to elect Commissioner Kennedy, Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, we have five ayes. Commissioners Acosta Galván and Rodriguez voting nay. Motion carries.
Thank you again. Okay, at this point, can we switch now? A couple seconds. Okay, so I'm gonna turn off my.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Thank you.
See, it's like, it's gotta do it in 30 seconds, so that's the bylaws.
Yeah, just to clean it up.
Can I say something prior? I just want to say thank you. You did a great job, prior Chair, so.
Thank you.
I know we kind of hit our stride at first meeting in a little rough, but over that, you did a very nice job as we moved through the process, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I gotta get all my stuff.
Got all my stuff now.
While we're changing the names on the placards, I would like to personally thank our staff, who's been fantastic. It's been a little, a little turnover, but you guys are equally as great as the last staff, and I want to thank you, and I look forward to working with all of you. And I want to thank our, our entire Planning Commission up here. They've been a pleasure to work with as a Planning Commissioner. And as a token of the city's appreciation, because I didn't make this, I do, on behalf of the city and the rest of the Planning Commission, I'd like to give this to Tracy in appreciation for your service to last year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to both of you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Sorry, sorry. Thank you. Wait, this is somebody's water. Okay. So. Rick, is this your water? No, it's unopened. Okay. Okay. All right. I was having a problem with my printer tonight.
All right, we can move forward. Again, thank you to my, my Planning Commissioners. It'll be a pleasure to serve you over the next year. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the public hearing item, Zoning Map Amendment 23-001. Planning Commissioners, please state your disclosures regarding this item. Please start on my right.
Thank you. I do not have any.
Skip public comments? That's, we didn't have any.
We already called for public comments.
I do not have any disclosures on this topic.
Thank you.
None?
Commissioner Kennedy? She just said no.
I have no disclosures, Chairman.
I have no disclosures.
I have no disclosures.
None.
And none.
All right. Staff, may we please have the staff report presentation at this time?
Yes, Madeline Welch, Associate Planner, will give the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight's item is a zoning map amendment consisting of city parks and city-owned properties. I am Madeline Welch, the project planner. So to begin, the project consists of 17 parcels with the request to amend the current zoning designations of such parcels to bring them into conformance with their general plan designations. The general plan is a comprehensive blueprint that provides the framework for the utilization and management of the city's physical and economic resources, and guides the decisions regarding land use in the city through the year 2040. State law requires every city to adopt a general plan and requires that the zoning ordinance be consistent with it. The zoning map and ordinance are tools that are used to implement the general plan and the land use element. And with that, staff has identified 17 parcels consisting of city parks and city-owned properties, which have zoning designations that are inconsistent with the general plan. So as such, this amendment is essentially a housekeeping item to clean up the zoning map, bring those parcels into conformance with the current general plan designations and to eliminate any nonconformities. The parcels included in this request that are developed as city parks would be amended to open space for parks and recreation. The parcels that are included in this request that are developed as city-owned parcels for utility purposes would be amended to public semi-public. And the amended designations will correspond with the pattern of the existing uses on site. So here is an existing zoning map. This is only outlining the parcels that are included in tonight's request of their existing zoning designations. I know it's hard to see, but I will go through each parcel. And then this would be the amended zoning map. And then, so to begin with example number one, this is the city gym. This is a city-owned property located on 17th Street and Palm Avenue next to Dwyer Middle School. It is currently zoned public semi-public. This, on the left, the image is showing the existing zoning map. And on the right, it is showing the existing general plan. So as you can see, they are not consistent and they do not match. Open space is the intended zone for commercial recreational use. And so this amendment would change the zone from the city gym to be open space to not only match the existing use on site, but to also match the general plan. Our second example is McAllen Park. McAllen Park is a city-owned park located just south of Yorktown Avenue between Huntington Street and Delaware Street. There are multiple parcels included in this park. As you can see, the three parcels to the south of the park currently have a zoning designation of medium-density residential. However, the general plan has the entire park designated as open space. So this amendment would change the three southern parcels of the park to all be consistent to open space, which is the intended zone for parks. Example three are the pump stations located on Warner Avenue. There are two pump stations somewhat adjacent to each other. The one on the left is zoned low-density residential. The one on the right is zoned general commercial. You can see on the general plan map that they are both intended to be zoned public, which is the zone or the designation for utilities. So this amendment would change both of those parcels zoning to be public semi-public to be consistent with the general plan. Our fourth example is Edison Park. Edison Park is a city park located at Magnolia Street and Hamilton Street. The two parcels included in this request are actually owned by Southern California Edison. As you can see on the left, the zoning map for those two parcels on the south are zoned residential agriculture. And the general plan has the entire park zoned as open space. So this amendment would change those two parcels to be open space to match the rest of the parcels that are included in the park. Our next example is Bauer Park. Bauer Park is a city-owned park currently zoned medium-density residential. On the left is the existing zoning map. As you can see, it is zoned RM, which is medium-density residential. The general plan designation is open space for parks. So this amendment would change that park to be open space for parks and recreation to match the general plan. Next, we have Bartlett Park. Bartlett Park is another city-owned park. It is located between Yorktown and Adams, just behind the Newland Center. On the left is the existing zoning map. Bartlett Park is currently zoned general commercial with a general plan designation of open space. There are three parcels included in this park that are outlined in the map there. So this amendment would change the Bartlett Park to be open space for parks and recreation to match the general plan. Now we have Wardlow Park. This park is another city-owned park located along Magnolia Street. The parcel to the right that is shaded in the gray color is zoned public semi-public. As you can see here, this is the zoning map. So the general plan has the entire park designated as open space. So this amendment would have the entire park zoned open space to match. Next, we have Langenbeck Park. Langenbeck Park is a city park, but this parcel is owned by Southern California Edison. This is somewhat common on the parks because there are electrical lines that run through some of them. So on the left, the existing zoning map shows residential agriculture zone as the existing zone for that portion of the park. The general plan has the park open space. So this amendment would change the park to be open space. Next, we have the Monroe Pacific Nursery. This parcel is located along Atlanta Avenue near the Santa Ana River Channel. It's currently zoned single-family residential. And the general plan designation intended for this site is public. So with that, the zoning map would amend it to public semi-public to match. I do want to point out that the nursery that's existing there is existing as nonconformity. And so this amendment to change the site to be amended to public semi-public would not intensify that nonconformity because there are Edison utility lines that are located along the river channel. And that is the intended zone and designation for the major utilities that are existing. Example 10 is Lamb Park. Lamb Park is a city-owned park that is located north of Yorktown. It is currently zoned public semi-public. Here is the existing zoning map and the existing, or the general plan. And so this amendment, again, would change the park to be open space to match the general plan as intended for city parks. And this is our final example. This is Oakview Park. Oakview Park is another city-owned park located east of Nichols Lane and north of Slater Avenue. It is currently zoned public semi-public. And then that portion, as you can see on the right, where the park is located, because it is next to a branch library, the Oakview Branch Library, the portion of the park is open space. So this amendment would only change that portion for the Oakview Park to match the general plan. So as I mentioned previously, staff has received five inquiries regarding tonight's request. Three were inquiring on further detail and two were asking if that included any development projects. Staff answered any questions that they had and noted that there is no development included in this request. It is only for mapping purposes. We also directed them to our community services department to inquire on any projects that are proposed on city parks. With that, staff recommends approval based on the findings that the ZMA is consistent with the general plan, its goals and policies. It's necessary to comply with California Government Code Section 65860 and that the proposed amendments will address nonconformities and bring such parcels into compliance with the general plan. And that concludes my presentation and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner questions? Anybody have any questions? View speakers. Oh, that's good. All right, Commissioner Pellman.
I have a clarification question. You know, the one park that was agriculture in part of its designation? So what happens? I happen to know that there are some people who were renting some space there to do some, you know, like, not gardening, but growing, you know, fruits, vegetables, things like that. Is that still going to go on even though we're rezoning it?
Yes.
OK. Thank you.
Commissioner Acosta Galván.
Yeah. For the parcels that are zoned residential, is there any concern that that's taking away, like, from our future housing stock? Or is it because they're city-owned, there wasn't ever really an intent to develop there?
So because the general plan has them designated as public semi-public for utilities, that is the long-term vision for that parcel. So, and it's already developed as a utility, so all we're really doing is matching the general plan.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kennedy?
Thank you. I wanted to, in this meeting, just again, thank you guys for the breakout of the parcels. It made it a lot easier to digest and how you grouped them is logical and well done. Thank you for that. Just a couple of quick questions. When was our previous general plan adopted prior to 2017?
It was in 1996, if I recall correctly.
So just on a moving forward, like when you see the city gym or any of these parcels, how are we cleaning up the zoning map to match now? I can understand if this was 2017 and we had COVID and things like that, but why is there such a difference? Why were they not cleaned up to match the general plan in the 1990s? What was it, 1998 you said, Mr. Ramos? Like the city gym, it's always been there.
Over the past few decades, we've always had efforts to do cleanup. In fact, I worked on some of those cleanups, you know, 20 years ago. But it's an ongoing effort and we don't always get to all of them.
OK. I mean, that's a little troubling because we talked about in the study session that to be, to have an adopted plan, you have to have consistency. So I understand 2017, we're cleaning up, we had COVID. So there's, you know, there was that break. But when we're looking back, we're cleaning up things from, you know, two decades ago. I mean, that just, it just does not seem to match what it takes to have an adopted general plan. I imagine there's leeway, but we're talking 20 years. We're talking decades here. So what happens on that?
You know, I don't know why they didn't update it at that time. Occasionally, when a general plan is adopted, and I think this happened with the 1996, the city changed all of their zoning designation acronyms, meaning that at one point in time, what is now RL, so our low-density residential, it used to be R1. And so my guess is along the way, things didn't get picked up, which is why we're picking them up now. That's really the only reason I would assume that, let's say, a consistency with, for a park or something like that, didn't get picked up back then. Some of the cleanups that we've worked on, I know that Ricky has worked on over the years, they're generally private property owned, where you have a property owner that's saying, hey, I can't do anything with my property. The city needs to clean these up. So the priority, at least since I've been here and probably some of the ones that Ricky worked on, were related to private properties that were owned by property owners that couldn't do anything with their properties and needed the cleanup. And it was less focused on, you know, publicly owned properties. But my guess is the reason why they became inconsistent is when the city changed, like zoning, like wholesale zoning designations and general plans, which I think happened in the 90s. And then into early 2000s for the zoning, maybe that's where they became inconsistent.
OK. So like, for example, you just said about a homeowner that says, hey, you need to change this so I can do something because they're nonconforming, they only have that 10% leeway. So that would, to me, be either a homeowner that didn't understand the zoning when they bought it or it would be a change in zoning after they bought it and they were not made aware of it, therefore limiting their property because the zone change without their opt-in, opt-out suddenly made their property nonconforming. Which do you think it is?
You know, I don't know. Some of the ones that I've seen over the years, like as I've worked the counter, have been whole streets that had inconsistent general plan and zoning. And it could have been at some point in the last, I don't know, however many decades where the zoning was changed to match the use that was on the site. Generally, that's the case. And the general, or the general plan, one of the two was changed, but the other wasn't. I don't know what that reason would have been. I mean, a lot of these properties look like they had developments on them or houses on them or houses in commercial uses that looked like they had been there from like the 40s and 50s. So it could have been where someone just elected to stay in a home that was then converted to commercial zoning, let's say. And then further along, the city might have changed it back to residential. It would really be unique to different streets, different properties. Our goal is really just to fix what's happening now.
You're right and understood. And that takes me back to the noticing thing that with the 2,200 notices sent out and five respondents, I get it on this, this is city-owned property in Southern California Edison. But I really think if there's going to be a zone change, it could have an adverse effect to a homeowner. It's really the main concern, or even a business owner, or any adverse effect because of zone change. There has to be a better noticing mechanism in place than, hey, we mailed you something or we put it in the EHB wave that, I mean, when's the last time anybody's even seen the wave? I noticed you guys said we published it in the wave. I don't think anybody gets the wave. But I mean, I think it's important that there's some kind of a really accurate notification mechanism in place. We're talking, in this case, about 140 properties. I think there literally should be a piece of certified mail that goes out, something that shows a record of receipt. Because you're going to have, especially if there's an adverse effect on a zoning change, somebody said, hey, I was never notified. And I just believe it's going to be a point of contention because a mail piece can get lost. The US mail is not that reliable. Mail gets stolen, mail gets thrown away if it's not really apparent that it's a need to open. So I just think, especially on a small cleanup like this, we might want to look into a better notification mechanism. Five out of 2,200 is terrible. It'd probably be better on some of the other ones, but I think we have to have something a little bit better than we sent out 2,200 mail pieces and we put something in the mail in the wave and five people responded. I don't know how you would bring that change about. Maybe the chair can look into it. But I mean, I think people, we have plenty of leeway coming up with this. We have a six-month window. And I think a small change like that could be enacted and be nimble. We're talking about 140 parcels. Certified mail is not expensive and I think it'd be money well spent. How could we bring that about?
This body could recommend that we look into, I would say, recommend maybe look into doing more targeted outreach. And then that way, we can look at whether it's certified mail or making sure that we get in touch with the property owners as we move into the private property where we're converting, like the last two, right? Commercial and residential.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see.
This body could make that direction through a minute action or something.
Chairman?
Well, let's get down to.
And then my last question is this, you know, on the zoning map amendment, like for example, Edison, using that as an example, it's OSPR on the zoning map amendment and then the general plan, it's OSP. So is there a reason there's not a match for the zoning map amendment and the general plan?
This would be the match. So OSP and OSPR are the matching designations.
From the zoning and the plan?
Exactly.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Commissioner Kennedy. Commissioner Adam?
Yeah, I had a similar question to Vice Chair Kennedy, first time saying that. It just, it's a very basic question, Jennifer. It seems like all of the corrections are from the zoning map to the general plan. So is it, is it fair to say that over the years, you've had modifications to the zoning map that either, that did not require modifications to the general plan? Or was meant over the years that we'll pick it up at the next general plan update? Because they're more, general plan updates are more, they're less frequent and more expensive, right? So is it, I'm just asking, is it rational that there's been zoning plan changes over the years and then the idea was to make them match at the general plan update and it didn't happen? I'm just, if they're always done together, it is confusing as to why you would see these disconnects, right? If they're always done together? So I'm asking, I'm just asking a very general question. Are they?
I mean, it could be, we really don't know what happened, you know, along the way. When we did the 2017 general plan, we probably had a couple of hundred parcels that we changed the general plan to match the zoning designation. And so this is, when we, when we looked at all of the properties, we looked at whether we needed to change the general plan to match the zoning or the zoning to match the general plan. We took care of the general plan in 2017 with the update and this is now the follow-up to take care of the zoning.
Thank you.
OK. I just have a couple of comments. As we get into this process later in the year, especially when it's under, the last two, Part Five and Part Six, commercial and residential, I think some of the comments Vice Commissioner, or Vice Chairman Kennedy made, is, they're going to be good. We should, we should explore a little bit better notification methodology when it affects commercial building owners and residential, you know, residents that are in the 300-foot circum, is that what we're doing, about 300-foot circumference of, you know? circum, is that what we're doing, about 300-foot circumference of, you know, from where the project is? All homes within 300 feet?
That is the minimum, yes, yeah.
Okay. And that's what we're, that's what we're sticking to here on each of these?
Correct.
You know, especially when the, when the zoning's going to change. I know there's a couple of projects that we looked at a couple of months ago in downtown Huntington Beach that are really changing, you know, significantly the zoning of properties that there are, there's residents on. So we need to make sure that we notice people in that neighborhood, because they may be in similar situations as this one on Main and Sixth Street, I think it was. But that's all I have to say, so we can move on. Oh, wait a minute. What? Oh. Commissioner Pellman.
Thank you. I have a, I just want to clarify, I think, I believe I asked this question three months ago when we last met, about Measure C. All these parks have nothing to do with Measure C, the changes, right?
Correct, yeah. The zoning cleanup does not trigger Measure C.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see where we're at now.
So Jennifer, if we were to make a minute action to call for a different notification methodology, would we do it now? And just speak in general terms, or what would you recommend?
I would do it when you take action, so I would have the public hearing first, and then when the planning commission is taking actions and making deliberations, after that, you could do a minute action.
Thank you.
Okay. With no further questions, according to my screen here, we will now open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We have no one signed up for public comments.
Okay. Are there any other speakers? Are there any other speakers? Apparently not. We will now close the public hearing. Planning Commissioners, we will now deliberate on this item. Any deliberation?
No, I mean, I'm ready, I'm ready to motion and approve it, and obviously, if there wants to be an amendment towards, a modification towards notification, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Commissioner Wood.
I'll second that.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
Just before we, before we vote, I wanted to show my appreciation to staff for the time that they put into putting this together for all of us and for splitting the parcels out. I think that'll make things a little bit more palatable for all of us going forward. So I appreciate the effort, and thank you very much.
And I will, I'll just add in, before we call for the vote, the package you gave us, this was excellent, excellent, excellent. I speak for myself, I love big pictures and big writing on there. That was very good, and it's very easily, easy to understand, so thank you. Let's see. Do we have a motion on this? Let's do it over again.
Sure. Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to amend the current zoning map to bring 17 parcels, zoning map amendment number 23-001, mapping consistency cleanup project, city parks and city properties to, motion to approve with a request, let me get the wording right, that the planning commission recommend different options for noticing at the next meeting? Is that, is that a, it's the staff to provide different notification methods at the next To move this forward?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Shall we vote?
We want to make sure you incorporate the motion for the sequo determination as well.
Where did I miss that?
So under recommended action, it's letter A.
Oh, sorry. Did I miss it? Oh, shoot, sorry. Sorry about this. Yeah. Yeah. And find the proposed project exempt from additional environmental review pursuant to Section 15183, and recommend approval of zoning map amendment number 23-001 to the City Council with findings, attachment 1.
We have all ayes, motion carries.
The planning commission's action on this item will be forwarded to the City Council.
All right. Next, we go, come to our consent calendar. So the first order is to approve the planning commission meetings, planning commission minutes dated September 26, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move approval. Oh, you go. You go. Commissioner Wood.
I'll make the motion to approve the September 26.
And I'll second.
Okay.
We have all ayes, motion carries.
Okay. Our next item on the consent calendar is item 24-074, and that's to approve planning commission meeting minutes dated October 10, 2023. Do we have a motion to approve those?
Just a note, I have to abstain from this one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 10, 2023 meeting.
We have four ayes, Commissioners Acosta-Galván, Adam, and Wood abstain. Motion carries.
All right. Planning items, planning commission advisory boards and committees, we need to discuss those. Do we do that right here, Tracy? Okay.
You can ask commissioners if they have a preference, because it went out in the email, and, or they can email Mr. Ramos, and he can get back with you, and you two can discuss it.
Yeah, and we can do it here. I mean, we're all sitting here. I am going to withdraw from the Design Review Board, and I was hoping, I don't know if this is a nominating thing, but I would like Oscar to become, be the liaison on the Design Review Board, if he would accept.
Yeah, absolutely. I saw the attachment that I was actually going to request to be put on, because I was the only one that didn't have a committee for 2024.
I was going to help you with that.
Yeah, so I was like, oh, I was a little sad, but. I was going to request, you know, to be on some sort of committee, it didn't matter if it was an alternate or liaison, but, yeah, I'd gladly accept the Design Review Board.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Let's see. Anybody else want to volunteer for?
Chairman Twining, I'd like to ask to stay as the member on the Southeast Huntington Beach.
You want, you want to stay on that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. That's fine. Anybody, and?
Chair Twining, I do have a, there's only, there's a 3:30 meeting on Wednesday, it's particularly tough for a family-work conflict every Wednesday, or every, for the remainder of the year. So I will, I will have a difficult time getting to that meeting, even though it's every other month, for the Economic Development Committee. So I, if there's anybody on this committee that would like to, I'm offering that up, I just, I can be an alternate, but I, I have a big conflict at that time. It's easier for 4:35, but on Wednesday in particular.
Commissioner Acosta-Galván, would you like that one?
I unfortunately would not be able to make it work with my work schedule. I was also going to request if I could be switched to an alternate on Historic Resources Committee, that getting to that meeting is proving difficult with work.
I get that.
Yeah.
I would like to be on the Historic Resources Board then, because that's a better time for me than.
You're taking notes. I fell behind on my notes.
If that's okay.
Okay, good. Okay, what's left uncovered right now?
Design Review Board alternate, could I do that?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. So Commissioner Acosta-Galván will be alternate on DRB.
Oh, my apologies. I have a, a meeting every Thursday, I'm sorry.
She was withdrawn for consideration.
Sorry.
Okay. I'll tell you what. Anybody else want to be?
Come on, come on, but you can skip golf. I'm just kidding.
It was just, you have to fill out a Form 700 now.
I'm just kidding. It's a joke. We were talking about golf in the, in the back room, so.
All right, you can put me on as alternate for DRB, and then just let me know if you can't make it, I'll go.
Yeah, okay. For sure, I think I can make, yeah, I can make those.
Okay. What's, anything else?
The only one uncovered is Economic Development Committee unless.
That's the one you're getting off of?
Yeah, unless Commissioner Wood wants to, sorry, I'm not putting you on the spot here.
If it was any other day than Wednesday, I could, but I can't do.
Is that golf day?
No.
I know somebody gave me a golf joke, so. Okay, go ahead and put me on that.
If, if my schedule changes, Chair, I can, I will let you know.
How about we put?
I can be alternate on, and all, and all, like I said, I have some flexibility, but I need to.
Commissioner Adam can be the alternate.
Thank you.
How's our coverage now? How are we looking?
Well, who do you have in the first position?
Me.
Oh, you took it.
All right. Well, that's a good thing. I think we got those covered. Let's see. Next item on our, on our planning items is Code of Ethics Annual Review and Acknowledgement.
Yeah, we just wanted to remind you that it's time for the Code of Ethics Annual Review, and for the new, the four newest commissioners, we have the blank forms for you guys to sign and turn it to staff, acknowledging that you've received the Code of Ethics. That's really all we have on that one.
Yes. Yes, I've turned mine in, and Vice Chairman Kennedy's got his right up here. Did everybody else fill theirs out and turn them in? Newbies? Okay. Well, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Huntington Beach Planning Commission is set for Tuesday, February 13, at 6:00 PM, right here in the council chambers. If there's no, nothing else to do. What? Whoa.
Go ahead. I have a question. This is for city staff. I think the Planning Commission Academy is coming up, it's in Long Beach, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. I sent an email out today to the commissioners, yeah. Feel free to take a look and let us know if you're interested.
Sorry, I didn't.
Got a busy day.
I just let you know, I emailed you. Okay, thank you.
Okay. With that, with that, as long as there's nothing else to discuss tonight, this meeting is not yet adjourned, because I think Mr. Rosas has something to say.
Chair, there's just one thing left, is to ask the planning commissioners if they have any comments before we adjourn. So we just ask each commissioner if they have any comments.
Oh, okay, before we close, thank you. We'll just start at that end, and with.
It's almost too late to say it, but Happy New Year to you all. Glad to be back, and look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks.
Again, I wanted to thank Mr. Ramos and staff for doing the direction of the commission, for splitting up the whole 141 parcels and making it very clear. So thank you. And I know it was a challenge to do that, so thank you again. And anyway, hope everybody has a good year, and thank you.
I've given my thanks for the well-done work, and I'd like to welcome Mr. Papa John.
I want to just say, just, you know, continue the message, carry the message of Happy New Year, even though it's a little late, about 23 days. Welcome our new Senior Deputy City Attorney, Nick Papa John, and say thank you to my, my colleagues up here for our first year of having us and teaching us the ropes. Thank you, all of you.
I just want to reiterate our thank, or my thanks to Commissioner Pellman for her work as chairman last year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just echo the same thing that my colleagues mentioned, and looking forward to another great year.
Yeah, Happy New Year, and looking forward to the rest of the year working together.
Thank you.